Good evening and welcome to the May 3 meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting the audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. And I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent And I will now lead us in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Aye. Counselor Boishman.
You are muted, but Counselor Boishman is present remotely.
Counselor Katur.
Here.
Counselor Cragan.
Here.
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Squalia.
Present.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Here.
And I am present.
Yeah, I'm sorry, President Zerella. I can go back up.
Not a problem. All right, before we begin public forum, I would just like to note that I am coming off the long tail end of a nasty respiratory infection, COVID negative. So I would ask everyone's patience with me. My voice may not be up to par, and I will probably have to pause more often than usual. If at any time I am unable to continue presiding, Vice President Van Hazinga has been notified that he has full discretion to take over the meeting at any time. That said, the public had been advised to contact the city clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. None have been brought to our attention. If there are any persons in the audience wishing to speak on any item on the agenda, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and the item on the agenda on which you wish to speak, and then you may speak on that item for not more than two minutes. Seeing none, we have a report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kucher.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening and took up two new appointments, full-time police officer, full-time student police officers for the Fitchburg Police Department, Angelo Gilot Jr. and Scott George, all of which were unanimously approved.
Motion to accept the committee's report?
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. And we will now have the swearing-in of our student police officers. Chief, if you would like to say a few words?
Yeah, just quickly, Mr. President, thank you. Once again, it's my pleasure to present to you two outstanding candidates for police officers for the city of Fitchburg for the next 24 weeks. They're going to be undergoing rigorous training at the Lowell Police Academy, learning the skills to be a police officer. And we look forward to getting them after their 24 weeks of training down in Lowell. But once again, we were able to attract some extremely well-qualified candidates, and we're truly excited to see what they bring to the city of Fitchburg, not only today, but for many, many years to come. And I'd like to thank you for your support this evening on both these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
As is typical, I will ask that we clear the center of the gallery so that we are not in the way of any photos.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully, faithfully, and partially.
That I will faithfully, and partially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform, discharge all the duties.
Of coming upon me as.
Coming upon me as.
A full-time student police officer with the Fitchburg Police Department.
A full-time student police officer with the Fitchburg Police Department.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Yes. Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Do you want to take a couple of pictures of your family right here in the middle of the council chambers?
Look back on the screen as you're not.
I love it.
Great.
He mashed the balls.
Did you perform?
I love the heart.
No.
Would you like pizza, Ted?
Yes. Thank you.
Great picture.
Thank you very much.
Ha, ha, ha.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chief.
Light-up sign if the businesses are open?
Oh, that's good.
I guess the C-click fixed already, so I'm sure it'll get done.
He clicks fix. That's a good one. Let somebody say that one. The city can't spell the word business.
All right. We now have a report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The records appear to be in order.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Motion, second, to accept the report of the Committee on Records. If there are no objections, it is accepted. We do have one new communication from His Honor, the Mayor, which was not noticed and is being included under the OML exemption for matters that were not reasonably apparent to the Chair prior to the meeting. As of only today, the Chief became aware of an opportunity for some additional student police officers to be sent to a separate session of the academy. And so we have here a letter from His Honor, the Mayor, dear Honorable Counselor. Motion to waive the reading of the communication and send it to Appointments?
Second.
All right, I am still going to read off the names of the appointees. We have Dawson Stacy, Ashley Perez, and Aria Rojas, who are all candidates for full-time student police officers, and that stands referred to Appointments. We have several annual reports. With consent, I will waive the reading of the names of the individual reports, and they will be placed on file with the clerk's office. Seeing no objection, they will be filed. We have now the report of the Economic Development Committee. Counselor Van Hazinga, before I turn over the floor, I would like to request that we vote simply to receive the report and hold debate on the substance of the zoning changes until the public hearing later on the agenda. With that, Counselor Van Hazinga.
Thank you, Mr. President. On May 2, 2022, the Economic Development Committee met to discuss proposed changes to the Fitchburg zoning ordinance that have previously been heard by the Planning Board on two occasions and also the Legislative Affairs Committee. The proposed changes were discussed, most of them being minor in nature to correct typographical errors or formatting issues or minor substantive changes like that. One larger change was to adopt a new section regarding the FEMA flood zone. That is a requirement to participate in the FEMA flood insurance program that was recommended for approval. All of the minor changes also were recommended for approval unanimously. The more substantive change was to the multifamily section of the zoning ordinance to clarify issues that have come up regarding byright residential uses on Main Street, which are presently allowed byright via a footnote to the use table. But in practice, the majority of the parcels that this would apply to did not meet the density regulations that are mentioned later in the report. So the object was to resolve this inconsistency and to allow for the byright residential uses of Main Street as intended. We have heard two different ways of tackling this. The Legislative Affairs Committee had voted to approve the creation of a new zoning district, which would be a subset within the DB district, only encompassing the properties along the section of Main Street that are presently affected by the byright use. And this would have the same allowable uses as the rest of the DB district, with the exception of multifamily of 16 units or fewer, which the intention of the zoning ordinance is to allow byright. Following this, the Legislative Affairs Committee meeting, the Planning Board meeting, heard the proposed changes, the initial proposed changes again, and recommended the use of the footnote with some clarifications. The committee considered these two possibilities and concluded that the use of a separate zoning district was clearer and more readily available to the reader and users of the zoning ordinance, and recommended approval of this section. However, this excluded one section that was approved by Legislative Affairs concerning the ability of the Planning Board to waive the density provision for units or developments with fewer than nine units. However, this was determined afterwards to not be needed because there is a separate clause in this section of the zoning ordinance which addresses this issue. Therefore, the Amendment Number 7, which concerns this section, was approved with the exception of this area, of this proposed change. Otherwise, the proposed amendments approved by the Economic Development Committee mirrored those of the Legislative Affairs Committee in their hearing.
Move to accept the report of the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second, and just to reiterate, this is a motion simply to receive the report, not to act on it at this time. Thank you. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent, and the report is accepted and filed. Report of the Finance Committee. Counselor Dina Tally.
Mr. President, Finance met on April 27 and took up the following. 6722 was amended to be $40,000 to replace a vehicle in the Building Department that was damaged due to an incident, not at the fault of the cities. So there will be some insurance recuperation from this to replace the plumbing inspector's vehicle. That was adopted as amended unanimously. 9822 was in order to accept a grant of $25,000 from the Department of Fire Services to purchase in-suit communication system radios to be used by the hazmat team and a combustible gas beater. That was adopted. 9922 was to accept a grant of $2,500 to let the Fire Department purchase a new defibrillator. That was adopted. 122 was a budget transfer of $16,750 from Health Personal Services Waits and Measures Inspector to Waits and Measures Charges to cover the annual testing and sealing of commercial weighing and measuring. This is due to us not having a full-time person online right now as they go through the hiring process, so we've contracted that service out, so that was a transfer. 10122 was in order to take $150,000 out of available funds and credited to the Police Personal Services overtime account to cover the anticipated overages of the Police Department overtime account through fiscal 22 June. Chief Marknow stated that many factors came into play this year that compelled him to come before us for additional funds that are not normally what he has experienced, and this is the first time in eight years they have had to come to us for a supplemental. So that was adopted unanimously. 10222 and 10322, I'm sorry, 10222 was adopted unanimously. It was for $161,865 to be charged against Wastewater Enterprise Fund retained earnings and credited to the following Personal Services account within Wastewater. This was to satisfy the three-year ratified contract of the SEIU Local 8888 contract. 10322 and 10422 were held in committee pending the receipt and review of the ordinances that go with them.
Motion to accept the report?
Second. I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we will take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Report of the Public Safety Committee. Counselor Green.
Yes, thank you. Public Safety met tonight and took up the following petition. 19621, Counselor Marcus Dina Tally, on behalf of resident Barbara Slattery, to install a sidewalk apron at the corner of Old Deerfield Road and Electric Ave. That was approved. 19921, Counselor Marissa Fleming, on behalf of Fisher Road residents, to request new signs and public lighting for Fisher Road. That was held in committee until the cost of lighting is made available to us. 21621, Sergeant Daniel Boudreau, Counselor Squalia, and Nick Erickson, to petition for installation of Traffic Island between Old Lemonster Road and Abbott Ave with additional no right turn on Abbott Ave turning onto Old Lemonster Road, an additional stop sign also at the end of Old Lemonster Road at Abbott Avenue. That was approved. 01822, Sergeant Daniel Boudreau, to petition for the installation of no parking at all times on both sides of Game On Way from Industrial Road, Victoria Lane intersection to Game On Soccer Facility entrance. That was approved. 02722, Counselor Derek Cruz, on behalf of a resident of 8 Boylston Street, to install a streetlight on Telephone Pole Number 4 on Boylston Street. That was sent to Public Works. 05822, 059, and 060, Sergeant Boudreau, to petition for no parking at all times on Industrial Road and Stevens Road, petition no parking tow zone on both sides of Roper Road from Industrial Road to Westminster Line, and no parking during Game On functions tow zone the entire length both sides of Victoria Lane was approved. 09322, Counselor Sam Squalia, on behalf of Nick Haynes, 115 Victoria Lane, to add four-way controlled stop at the intersection of Victoria Lane, Industrial Drive, and Game On. That was, petition was sent to Public Works. 10722, Michael Jureg and Tal Mahavidav, River Street Auto Sales, doing business as J. and G. Auto Sales, to petition for a Class II dealer's license located at 369 River Street. That was approved, and that is only for a change of ownership.
Make a motion to approve the report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the report. If there is no objection, then it is approved under unanimous consent. We have a report of the Planning Board regarding the expansion of the Smart Growth District, which was recommended by the Planning Board to be granted. I believe that is also being taken up in our public hearing, so I will simply ask unanimous consent to file that report.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, seeing no objection.
Wait, where's the public hearing in the agenda?
Public hearing is on the next page following this one, right after the report of Public Works.
090. Oh, I see it. Okay, thank you.
All right, and a report of the Public Works Committee. Counselor Fleming.
I'm going to have Counselor Schultz, because he chaired that meeting, so I'm going to have him speak to that.
Certainly. Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Counselor President Zerella. The Public Works Committee met on April 26, 2022, and took up five petitions. The first one was 09422. It was a berm on the backside of 280 Anhow Farm Road, and that was approved. Second petition was 09522, and it was a berm at 161 Marshall Road, and that was also approved. 09622 was a berm on Longwood Ave, north of the intersection with Pearl Street, and that was approved as well. And the 09722 was a petition to place trash barrels on Main Street from Lauren Square to Academy Street, and that was granted as well. And it may also be part of the grant that the Reimagined North is going to get, so we would probably, they'll work it with that particular grant. And then there was one other petition that was held, and let me get that number. It was 08920, and that was to remove a no-turn-on-red sign at John T. Citrino Memorial Drive and Water Street, and that's going to be held once again, and that was approved to be held.
Move to accept the report of the Public Works Committee. Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report of Public Works. If there is no objection, it is approved under unanimous consent. Now, we have a public hearing on, actually, we're going to start with the, oh, no, here he is. Okay, excellent. We're going to start with the public hearing on 00922, the Fitchburg Planning Board, to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance by making several corrections and clarifications as described in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open. And Mr. Skroski, would you like to present?
Yes.
Specifically on the main zoning changes, the Smart Growth will come immediately following.
Okay, so it's a little bit tempting to have our City Hall offices right next door because I feel like I can just keep working up until the bell.
We're all guilty of that.
I did an FATV and arrived here right on time. So the zoning changes in front of you stemmed originally from the requirement from a FEMA audit to update our floodplain overlay district. Basically, if we wanted to continue to participate in the flood insurance program, we needed to make a series of changes related to our zoning and that specific bylaw. And I think many of the counselors present today know how arduous our zoning rewrite effort was, the 17 months we all spent together virtually just about a year ago to date. And we made every effort to avoid reopening the zoning ordinance until a time at which we had to. When the floodplain overlay district was presented as a need to update, we realized, well, we had a series of changes and requests that we had received from various counselors, from the Building Commissioner, from the Planning Board Chair, that we had, you know, just sort of put off until the time was right to present a series of changes to you, which is what we have tonight. So again, the major change is related to that one piece, the floodplain overlay, but the other eight items on the agenda are just other things we figured, well, the hood is open, so to speak, and we're making the zoning changes, let's tackle those items too. So I want to make sure I've got the access to the HDMR's board. Okay. ...we have received from various counselors, from the Building Commissioner, from the Planning. Well, that's odd. See, I'm paying attention to how the meeting's unfolding so I can run over here at the last minute and hook up my PowerPoint. All right. Would it be possible to get the PowerPoint brought up on the screen?
Coming right up, it looks like.
Excellent.
Counselor Boishman, because you will not be on screen at the moment, if you do have any comments that you need to make during the time period when I open it to the council, please just speak up.
Okay, great. So we've got two petitions, and again, 9022 is the Smart Growth Zone. We'll talk about that shortly. 922 is what is in front of us today. So again, nine amendments in total, Amendments 2 through 6, 8 and 9 were unanimously agreed to by the Planning Board, the Economic Development Committee, and the Legislative Affairs Committee. Amendments 1 and 7, which pertain to multifamily housing on Main Street, I think requires more work by the City Council to bring us to a consensus because there, as Counselor Van Hazinga alluded to before, there are some various approaches we could take to address this same topic of multifamily housing on Main Street. What I would suggest is that we take the items out of order and take the ones that had a greater consensus, that seemed fairly straightforward, unanimously adopted by each group, and then move to Numbers 1 and 7, which are a bit thornier.
Any objections from council to voting these individually out of order? Seeing no objection, go right ahead, Mr. Skroski.
Okay, great. So Amendment Number 2 is just a typo, and you see each of the changes I have underlined in blue as we go throughout. I just changed an A to an N. This was, you may be surprised, unanimously adopted by everyone.
Move to accept Amendment Number 2 as, by all committees?
Certainly. I have a motion and second. I am going to assume unanimous consent unless anyone speaks up. All right, that is approved. Moving on.
1813362 is one of three changes to the abandonment and vacancy piece of our zoning ordinance, which actually wasn't taken on in last year's zoning changes. And this essentially deals with the basic concept that if a property has been vacant for two years or more, or has been abandoned, which can happen instantaneously, a property loses its pre-existing non-conforming rights, what folks often hear colloquially as being grandfathered into pre-existing zoning. So if a property's been vacant for over two years or has been abandoned, it can lose those rights, but through this provision, it can seek to receive a special permit to reinstate that grandfathered use. And these three items, Numbers 3, 4, and 5, pertain to this special permit process.
So before we move on that, I actually have to apologize. I made an error in procedure. Because we are in a public hearing, we're not going to vote these as we hear them. We'll hear them all and then vote them individually after members of the public and of our boards have had a chance to comment.
Great.
So go ahead, though.
So this first item, 3362, 3, is a parking clarification. So this is the clause in question, and it said the structure or use, this is one of the criteria that must be met to receive a special permit. The structure or use meets the zoning requirements for the number of off-street parking spaces in Section 181.512, provided that the parking spaces may be located on the premises or on a dedicated private or public off-street parking facility located within 800 feet or a reasonable distance from the lot where the principal use is located. That second clause is very wordy and creates some lack of clarity for developers, for us as city officials, as to how to interpret it. And ultimately, the recommendation was to get rid of everything but 181.51. So essentially, it would state, "The structure or use meets the zoning requirements for the number of off-street parking spaces in Section 181.51," which is the off-street parking section of our bylaw. So it basically just says you need to conform with the same thing all other developments have to with regard to off-street parking. The next section, 1813366, talks about clarifying criteria versus considerations when granting permits. So the way that this section is devised is the ZBA is the one that can grant a special permit to reinstate a grandfathered use. And this lists a set of criteria that the ZBA must consider, that all of the following criteria have been met. These are all supposed to be criteria, but they're not, and that's really the change in question here. So first of all, and this was what drew the amendment in the first place, Letter E, "The Board of Appeals may find that despite the discontinuance of use for two or more years, the owner has made and provides evidence and documentation demonstrating good faith effort to restore the non-conforming use, or has been unable to, due to illness or military service, payment of property taxes on the property shall not constitute a good faith effort." So what this really is, is something the Planning Board can take into consideration, but it shouldn't be a criteria that must be met in every single case. That wasn't the intent of the law, that somebody had to have been absent for military service or illness or anything like that. It was really a consideration. So the original amendment suggested removing the Letter E, therefore taking it off the list of criteria that must be met, and adding it as a criteria for consideration. The next section, 1813366, talks about clarifying criteria versus considerations when granting permits. So the way that this section is devised is the ZBA is the one that can grant a special permit to reinstate a grandfathered use. And this lists a set of criteria that the ZBA must consider, that all of the following criteria have been met. These are all supposed to be criteria, but they're not, and that's really the change in question here. So, first of all, and this was what drew the amendment in the first place, letter E, the Board of Appeals may find that despite the discontinuance of use for two or more years, the owner has made and provides evidence and documentation demonstrating good faith effort to restore the nonconforming use, or has been unable to, due to illness or military service, payment of property taxes on the property shall not constitute a good faith effort. So what this really is, is something the planning board can take into consideration, but it shouldn't be a criteria that must be met in every single case. That wasn't the intent of the law, that somebody had to have been absent for military service or illness or anything like that. It was really a consideration. So, the original amendment suggested removing the letter E, therefore taking it off the list of criteria that must be met, and adding it as a criteria for consideration. It keeps it in that paragraph, so it's something that the ZBA would use to guide their decision-making, but it's no longer a criteria that must be met. Subsequent to that, the Legislative Affairs Committee amended that further by adding the language, they may consider and may equitably depart from the above criteria if it finds that, so on and so forth. And then they amended that further by noticing that criteria D is much the same. It's not a criteria that must be met, it's saying what the Board of Appeals may do. It may impose such reasonable conditions, safeguards, or limitations on time or use. So the suggestion was made to eliminate letter D and remove that, move that language down at the bottom. So it's still an important consideration, but it's not a criteria that must be met. And this change was adopted unanimously by the Legislative Affairs Committee and then by the planning board in their April meeting and economic development last night. The next section is regarding lot width. I know this is very exciting, so bear with me. And it really has to do with the use of commas or lack thereof, and there's basically a clause here right at the end of the sentence that we're just fixing by adding some parenthetical statements. This was proposed by Councilor Zarella and Commissioner Barbadoro because without this parenthetical or comma, it's just confusing to read, and it's unclear what the intent of this provision is set to be. 1816922 and 6923 deals with earth removal, and this is, you know, the mass removal of earth from sites, it's kind of like, you think of it like mining. And the zoning changes last April added this provision to regulate earth removal through a special permit. And during that process, it was bounced back and forth whether or not the planning board or the ZBA should have the privilege to be the special permit granting authority for earth removal projects. Started with the planning board, then went to the ZBA, then went back to the planning board. There are still a few references to the ZBA in the ordinance, so this change would just correct any references to the ZBA and insert the planning board, which accurately reflects the rest of the document. Number eight, the zoning map amendment. This is for School Street, parcel 18880, and currently it is split in half between the downtown business district and the RB district, which is a residential neighborhood. It has frontage on Main Street, it is a large property that is more well-suited for a downtown business district type of development, and we've received a development proposal that looks more like something you'd see in a downtown, less like something you'd see in a residential neighborhood, a coffee shop, basically. So, we wanted to more accurately reflect the character of that building, which is a downtown building more than an RB building. So that's ultimately the goal of this map amendment. And then the floodplain protection overlay district, again, this is based off of an audit we received from the NFIP coordinator at the state who works on behalf of FEMA. I'm interested to hear what your opinions are on 181.85, but it's not particularly pertinent because FEMA's telling us we need to do this in order to continue to participate in the program, so we don't have much choice on the matter. And that covers sort of the items that were passed unanimously by all committees. Shall we then move into the rest, or?
Go ahead. Counselor Reed?
I had one question about amendment number six, the removal of earth, and how that's going to affect, if any, effect with the Amazon project, with the FRA acquiring the sand pit.
Good question. So, the sand pit property that the FRA currently owns and is in under agreement with GFI Partners, who is the developer of Amazon, to create a 364, 65,000 square foot facility at that 42-acre site, which is split in half between Lunenburg and Fitchburg. That site is currently in front of the planning board for a site plan review, but, you know, currently that site is being used for earth removal in a way. You know, we're removing it for sand to utilize for plowing operations in the city, or at least we did once upon a time. I think we don't use it for that same purpose now because of the grain of the sand and a few other characteristics. But it's really more apt to be looked at as an industrial property throughout the site plan review process, so I don't think it'd be impacted here.
Okay, thank you.
Also, just to clarify, the amendments that we're making tonight to the earth removal section don't enact any substantive changes, they just conform our ordinance so that it's clear that it's the planning board and not the zoning board that handles that. So no new requirements will be created or no requirements will be removed.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
No problem. Go ahead.
Any other questions on items covered thus far?
There will be an opportunity for further discussion.
I got one question, Mr. President.
Counselor Boishman, go ahead.
On, my question to Tom is on School Street, I think it's item eight, you changing the map, zoning map?
Yes.
Are we gonna, are we gonna go and have the guys start to develop that piece of property? It's been vacant for so long, a long time.
That's certainly the goal, and I think if it were, currently, it has to actually conform with the more restrictive zoning of the two because it's split, and that's the RB district, which really constrains the ability to redevelop a property of that scale. I think if you have it zoned as DB, number one, it doesn't have a stringent parking requirements, it has a much greater scope of commercial development potential as well as multifamily development potential. So I think this is an important step to getting that property redeveloped.
Do you think that the redevelopment authority will look at that property?
Good question. It's right on the fringes of their urban renewal district. I'm not sure if this one's covered. It's certainly something I could talk about with the executive director, Megan Dunnehugh, but, you know, certainly we do have a property owner right now who's engaged and willing to develop, and I think that's the most important first step. The zoning here is sort of a, something inhibiting their ability to do what they want with the property. I often, you know, I'd suggest that we would utilize the FRA for those sites where we don't have a willing property owner, who's not willing to put the money in to make an investment.
All right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions on the unanimously recommended amendments? And what I was going to say is there will be an opportunity for further questions, if any arise, as we hear opinions and testimony from any members of the boards or of the public in the later stage of the public hearing. Okay, so let's proceed to amendment one.
Great. And amendments one and seven are really linked, and I'll talk about why they are. Ultimately, they deal with building residential by right downtown. And before I get into it, I just want to draw the distinction about what that means to develop by right versus by special permit. If a use is permitted by right, the way it's reflected on our zoning district is it's a Y, which means the presumption is you're allowed to do it. You would, in many cases, if not all cases, in what we're talking about here, would still need to get what's called a site plan review from the planning board, where they take a look at your plans and a look at, take a look at how the plans communicate with the neighborhood it surrounds, the traffic and parking impacts, all of those important considerations to look at the impact of a project on the surrounding area. But the assumption is it's an allowed use. If a project on our use table has either BA, Board of Appeals, PB, Planning Board, and in some rare cases, CC, City Council, that means that a special permit is required from one of those three bodies to get exactly what it sounds like, special permissions to have that use take place in that area. So, again, by right, the assumption is you're allowed to do it, but you need a site plan review. Special permit, the assumption is you need, the burden of proof is on you as the applicant to show to the land use body that this is a use that's allowed in the district. And so we have a footnote in our use table, and you can kind of see it here, there's a little number one next to the downtown business district. And for those developers who look closely with their magnifying glass, they can see, notwithstanding the provisions of the Table of Principal Use Regulations, residential uses are permitted by right in the DB district, provided they're located above the first floor of the structure, as viewed by Main Street. So theoretically, if you're a developer and you're looking at that, one would think that residential uses are permitted by right on Main Street if they're above the first floor. Logic would follow. The problem is there is another section of our zoning ordinance, and this has always been an issue even before it changes in April, that deals with density requirements. So our multifamily development standards, and multifamily development is any residential development greater than three units, so four units or greater. This section, which governs all residential development of four units or greater, has a standard here, number one, that says for every dwelling unit above three units, there shall be an increase in minimum lot area over and above the minimum for the district, equal to one-third the minimum lot area for the district. In districts with no minimum lot area, downtown business district has no minimum lot area. A multifamily use under this section shall have a minimum lot area of 2,500 square feet per unit, including the first three units. So if somebody wants to develop downtown, a three-unit, or a four-unit development, they would need to have that development be 10,000 square feet minimum lot size, 2,500 per unit. For context, here, you have 409 Main Street, that's the property right at Main and Pritchard that has, for a long time, had a billboard on it, or a mural on it, and now that mural's kind of been moved around in kind of a jigsaw puzzle-like fashion as they're doing renovations. That's a four-unit development on roughly 2,500 square feet. So, the use table says you're allowed to build housing by right on Main Street, but that density requirement makes it functionally irrelevant for almost any developer. And we did a quick back-of-the-envelope analysis just to show that is the case. All the ones that are in pink, those are properties on Main Street where it would be completely impractical to actually by right develop housing on Main Street. The ones that are in green, it would be practical under the current provision. Those that are in that, I don't know what that is, that color.
Off-white.
Yeah, off-white. Those are public facilities, right? So like the federal building, parking lots, those aren't going to be redeveloped in housing, or at least not anytime soon. And then yellow are those that would be unlikely, and what do I mean by that? You have, at this building, Pritchard Plaza is over 100,000 square feet. You would be allowed to build a significant amount of housing, but in all likelihood, not significant enough to justify the huge investment you'd have to make to reinvest in that building. And likewise with 470 Main Street, I think it says you're able to build 20 units or so, given the lot size. That's a 33-unit development, and that development just barely scraped by in razor-thin margins to make it work. So, yeah, you could build some housing, but it's probably impractical to do it to the scale you would need for it to be economically viable. So we're ultimately in a case where most housing on Main Street actually isn't allowed by right, which is why the original proposal, the intent was just to be honest with people, and that's, I think, really important for us when we talk about being business-friendly as a city. I just want to be honest with people and upfront about what is the reality. I don't want to sell them a bill of goods that we can't fulfill. So the original idea was just to input residential uses of three units or fewer are permitted by right, which is true, because if it's not a multifamily development, it doesn't fall victim to that density provision. And then consequently, in that multifamily development standard section, just scrapping that section that says by right on Main Street, because if you are seeking a waiver from the planning board, you're seeking it through a special permit, you're not seeking it by being by right. So they're sort of conflicting provisions. So that was the original petition. Now let me take you on the journey of the various boards and committees that have talked about this subject, and the different solutions that have been offered. So as Councilor Van Hazenga had mentioned earlier, two solutions have been offered. One is to create a new district called the in-town district, where housing of six units or less is allowed by right. The second solution is to create an amended footnote, similar to the one you saw before, where it changes the footnote to clarify that housing is allowed by right on lots with Main Street frontage. Forgot the last clause there. And so these two solutions have been sort of legislated at various events throughout the last few months. March 14, the planning board recommended flexibility for by-right housing, they kind of rejected that original petition and said, we do want to support by-right housing, here are some different ways you can go about doing it, and then provided the community development and planning team with discretion to draft a new solution. On March 30, I presented that new solution, the new district solution, to the Legislative Affairs Committee, which voted to accept the new district solution with some caveats and changes that Councilor Zarella, or Ben Hazenga noted before. And then on April 28, the planning board decided to reopen their public hearing and adopt the amended footnote solution, and I imagine the chair of the planning board will further detail sort of the thought process there, but I think the idea was there was various opinions on the board, and it was frankly for me just hard to decipher what direction they wanted me to head in, and I think once folks saw it on paper, perhaps not everyone decided that was the route they wanted to take. And then it went to the Economic Development Committee last night, and the committee looked at both options and ultimately adopted the new district solution. So, those are the two solutions, let me run by them briefly and then talk about the city council determination of the preferred approach, the new district or the amended footnote. The new district solution creates the in-town business district, which is what you see in red here, I probably should have picked a different color, not to be confused with the Market Basket Plaza. It mirrors the downtown business district in every aspect, except that the ID allows housing by right with six units or less. Why six units or less? It mirrors the parking exemption that currently exists in our zoning ordinance, which states that Main Street from day to a mechanic, any residential properties of six units or less are not subject to parking requirements, essentially. So this would apply to new and existing buildings, and it would require changes throughout the ordinance to make this consistent. And I've started to do that, and it's actually a relatively straightforward process, but I was not going to accelerate it further until I knew the direction the council wanted to head on this. And it would allow for continued zoning innovation in the district if we wanted to make further tweaks and further innovations to further support development within the in-town business district. We'd have the ability to do that without thinking about the impacts on the rest of the DB district, which, you know, extends all the way to Longstreet Elementary, it extends to Morin Square, and it extends out to parts of River Street. So this would be a much more constrained district that maybe we could innovate and be a little bit more flexible in our zoning requirements. And then there would have some corresponding changes in the multifamily development standards. Both committees determined that if they were going to adopt a new district solution, they would then get rid of this clause because it's no longer necessary. The Legislative Affairs Committee adopted, again, we've got nine units or more, the planning board has the ability to waive the density requirement, the Legislative Affairs Committee also voted to move nine to seven units or more, and at the time, for a good reason, because they were thinking, if we're going to allow housing by right for six units or less, and there is a waiver requirement, or a waiver ability for the planning board by special permit for nine units or more, what about the seven-unit and the eight-unit developments? They're kind of left behind. So the intent was by reducing it to seven, you don't leave any units behind. But the Economic Development Committee decided to go back to nine because there is an existing clause that says the planning board may amend the above requirements for multifamily development in the DB district, et cetera, because it finds it to be appropriate and within smart growth. This is not, this would still be by special permit, but it would be a waiver that they could grant. So that's the new district solution. So that's the new district solution. The amended footnote solution's a little bit simpler, and it amends the existing use table footnote and makes corresponding changes to the multifamily development standards. Housing would be allowed by right on existing buildings, not new construction, upper-story housing, on lots with Main Street frontage. So the footnote would read as follows. Residential uses are permitted by right for existing structures in the DB district, provided they're located above the first floor of the structure and are located on a lot which has frontage on Main Street. This would also require a subsequent change to the multifamily development section, basically stating, again, this is the density requirement, a line to follow would say lots subject to residential uses by right on Main Street, 181-313, Table of Principal Uses, footnote one, are exempt from this provision. And then standard two would, once again, delete the element of it being by right, but then would say the planning board may waive the density provision under 181-7431, if determined that the grant of such waiver would not adversely affect the neighborhood and promotes the purpose of this section. So in summary, the new district solution creates a new district, six units or less is by right. The amended footnote solution amends the existing footnote, which would allow by-right housing on existing upper-story housing on lots with Main Street frontage. I will leave it to the council to determine which route you want to take. I think they're both great options, and I think they're both very feasible to accomplish. Once I've got the direction of the council, I could turn it into ordinance language that would then be brought back to the council.
All right. I'm going to open it up to questions only from the council at this time. I will ask that we hold any actual deliberation until we've heard from the public and our boards. Councilor Squaw.?
Thank you. Tom, could you go back to the number seven? The only question I have is on the, in the new zone, the in-town district zone, the seven, the changing to seven, and then after that, economic development changed it back to nine, because the planning board can waive it anyway for up to seven. So, but why wouldn't we just change it to seven if number six already exists anyway? Can you please explain that again?
Yes. So when the Legislative Affairs Committee, actually, hold on, I'm going to take a step back. So the way zoning changes take place is through 40A, the state's zoning-enabling legislation. We need to submit a petition that says, "Here's the thing that we wanted to deliberate on." And then, public hearings are set through planning board, through where we are tonight, of course, and you can deliberate on the exact petition items that were brought in front of you. So we were deliberating the topic of Main Street by-right housing development, and originally, this item was brought up to cure an issue that we perceived to create an unintended consequence, because we were making one change that had an unintended consequence in another area. After a further review, it appears as though there was not an unintended consequence that we would be curing, so it seemed outside of the scope of the petition. And then it was really having much more broad-ranging impacts, above and beyond just Main Street, but thinking about multifamily development throughout the city. And we felt like that was perhaps, at that point, a little bit outside of the scope of what the petition sought to achieve.
Okay. And, but the number six bullet allows the planning board the discretion to not just do nine-plus, but seven-plus in the in-town business district anyway?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So on that, actually, I'm about to break my own rule and engage in deliberation. I apologize. Any further questions before we open it up? Councilor Green.
Yes, thank you. My question to you, Tom, is how would that affect, if it has to be property facing or on Main Street, how does that affect us moving forward on Putnam Street? With development there on some multi-level buildings that potentially have, you know, retail space on two sides on that corner, but then, you know, further up or down on Putnam Street, however you're, from the police department, let's say, coming down Putnam Street, on the right-hand side there, there's potential for not only, you know, retail on the first floor, but there could be housing up on levels two, three, four, and five of some of those buildings. Does this affect how we'd we further develop that if we wanted retail and residential in that area of town?
Good question. So both approaches go at it a slightly different way. But if you think of frontage, when you say frontage, that's basically, is the parcel, does it have the front of the parcel, is it a budding Main Street, right? So if you think of the footnote approach, it includes most of the parcels that are included in the in-town business district, but not all of them, because some of them don't have frontage on Main Street. So for example, if we're going to go to Putnam Street, and I'll say Oliver too, because Putnam becomes Oliver once you go north of Main Street, you have, for example, this property right on the end of that block, I guess that's Oliver and Elm at that point, that's included in the in-town district, but not the other district, because it doesn't have frontage on Main Street. But, you know, looking at this, any properties that are within this district or that have frontage on Main Street would be allowed to produce housing by right. That doesn't mean that other properties that are not within this district or are in the DB district and don't have Main Street frontage, they could still produce multifamily housing of significant scale, it's just not by right, it's through the special permit process of the planning board, which generally is very supportive of housing development and smart growth downtown. So I think it's just a little bit easier for certain properties, and in both, options include many of the Putnam Street properties you're talking about. But I think there's, it's not an either-or necessarily. I think it's an easier approach and then a slightly more difficult, but still achievable approach.
And to further that comment, who, if, I'm not going to say if, when we have developers that come to 01420 and want to start developing these properties with multi-use, retail and housing, what department, when they're standing down in the building department filling out their paperwork, who determines what's going to be the better approach for them on either in-district or by-right or by-use? Either or. I mean, I, you know, we've heard for years that it's difficult to develop or do business in 01420. We want to change that. So who, at that point, determines what their best avenue is going to be for their project?
So to some degree, it's you and everyone at the table here to set the legislation that then compels us to act as municipal officials. So that's the first step. Things we're doing right now is kind of creating the zoning ordinance to create the most logical paths for success. And then from there, which I think is what you're really getting to, when they get to City Hall, they start with the building commissioners, submit a form of intent for their idea. That form of intent now, because it's an online system, gets triggered to my office and to, you know, all the various divisions, economic development, planning, housing development, where we kind of put our heads together to think about resources and supports and other ways in which we can kind of usher this development proposal through the process to go from idea to reality.
Great. I love hearing that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Cregan.
What are the circumstances that, if a builder bought a building and decided they wanted to go up more stories, is there a plan that would make it, I don't know, easier for them to do that? Because I look at the amazing, you know, Morin Square project, in which, you know, two separate buildings then become a third, and then it seems like that building has gone up a bit, it certainly has on the fire station side, so versus the in-town district solution versus the other plan, which makes more sense? Because it seems that people coming here, you know, might say, you know what, it actually makes more sense if we do some additional, and then, again, that would trigger the four, you know, the 2,500 square foot, because that, you know, they'd be covering that. I yield the floor.
Right. So the footnote, if we're going to compare the two, the footnote actually does make it slightly easier for existing buildings. But for new construction, it doesn't include new construction. So I guess if you were to build up, the in-town business district solution might be the preferable approach, with the caveat that you could only build up to six units by right. Anything beyond that, you would be on the same playing field as the footnote version, which in many cases, we'd find ourselves in the situation where both of them, you would need to seek a special permit. So I think for something like Morin Square, unless it's in the smart growth district, in which case it's allowed by right, and we'll talk more about that tonight, too, it will be a special permit process.
Thank you.
All right. I have Councilor Schultz.
Tom, last night at the Economic Development Committee meeting, you know, we talked about, you know, making it easier for developers, and that's why we voted for the in-town district. So I guess for both new and existing buildings, it would be easier for the developers to do it by right, because we want to make it, that's our goal, right, is to make it easier for the developers to come in and develop these buildings?
So I think, I think there are virtues to both approaches, and I think both approaches make it easier than where we're at today. I would say with an existing building that's more than six units, the footnote might be easier, because it's not limiting it to six units. If you're looking to do new construction of less than six units or less, the district approach might be better. And I guess overall, there's sort of this philosophical thing, if we want to be clear and upfront with people about what's allowed and what's not, is the best way to do it by creating a district where we're really explicit about our values, or adding it as a footnote that you've got to really...
So you've got to read the fine print.
You've got to read the fine print. It's actually a really good solution if you read the fine print. That's really the only caveat there, but in many cases, it's better than the other approach. But they're both good. I know I'm being diplomatic with my response, but it's the truth.
All set?
Yeah, thank you, Council President Zarela.
Vice President Van Hesenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to just touch on something that Councilor Schultz just brought up, too, that in regards to those small unit developments, or small developments with six or fewer units. So that number was really picked, because along Main Street, we have a lot of smaller properties that don't support a large development, but the upper stories could be redeveloped into a handful of units. So I wanted to ask about that need to go through a special permit process versus a by-right allowable use, in that, does the need to, developers come to your office to look at prospective properties or projects on Main Street, does the need to apply and go through the special permit process affect their decision-making, whether or not to go forward with the project, what they feel a project will be feasible, or will be, permission will be granted, or how do developers react when they have that question of, okay, we can do this, but we have to go through a special permit, versus it's allowable by right, they know clearly what they have to do or what they can't do?
Good question. So the Hubbard International Building, some of you might, you know, be aware, has been redeveloped in housing, four units on the upper stories, commercial below. And so this developer had come to the city the day after they bought the thing, they, I'm exaggerating, but they put plans together with the architect, they came to our office immediately and put their plans on the table. And I'm going to be honest, even us, we said, "It's allowed by right, it's housing in the upper stories on Main Street," and it seemed like a big enough lot. I then heard through multiple other folks within the community that, you know, weeks later called back and said, "Wait a second. I thought you guys said housing was allowed by right. I've got this developer calling me freaking out, because they're worried about this investment that they just made in their property." And I don't mean to speak ill of them, it's not, they're fantastic, but not every special permit process is as helpful and facilitating as our planning board. So we need to kind of think of it, if you're an outsider coming in, a lot of developers deal with other communities that are not as willing to support housing development. So when people hear a special permit, they might not know that we put a pretty good process together to facilitate it through our special permit process. And a lot of apprehension happens when folks see that SP, or PB in this case, because they don't know what the future holds. And so we oftentimes get a lot of people who, you know, before you buy a property, you've got to work with an architect, work with an engineer, put plans together. A lot of people wouldn't be willing to make that initial investment, given that uncertainty.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions? All right, I'm going to open it up. Is there anyone, the two attendees from our boards will be given the opportunity to speak in just a moment. First, I just want to go through the formalities of the public hearing, and I say "formalities" because I see no one else in the audience, except, of course, Chief Suarez, who is welcome to speak on this matter if he wishes. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none. Any in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. Now, if our board chairs would like to approach either together or one by one, it's up to you guys. I'll let you settle it, just don't duel for it or anything.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. I know this can be a complicated subject matter, parking, density, residences, numbers of units. So as Tom had mentioned, that the developer in question had come...
Can you just state your name for the public record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Quite all right. I forget sometimes, too.
My name is Paula Karen. I am chair of the Pittsburgh Planning Board.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. So on, Tom did bring to our attention with the new zoning ordinance provisions that went into effect in September regarding a development that occurred downtown in the Upper Common, where, again, where the developer had this for, was going to put four units on the second floor, and actually was exempt from the parking, because on the table of parking requirements, it was under six, under six units. But they had to come for a special permit for a waiver of the lot density. So it was, this is by right, I can do this, I don't even, parking, off-street parking is not even required, even though he's providing some. So he was there solely in order to get relief from the lot density. So we're like, okay, is that an impediment towards what's happening here? The board discussed it, and at our last meeting on the 26th, we were looking towards exempting the requirement for lot density for the presently on Main Street, for the residential uses by right under the footnote. When we're examining that footnote, we also noticed about, as viewed by Main Street, so it really didn't clarify the lots, or like which buildings, when you say "as viewed by Main Street," did you really mean lots on Main Street, lots you could see from Main Street? So we really wanted to, thought there would add some clarity to that, as well as also being clear that this is for existing buildings. So the Santander building on Main Street, and not, say, the vacant Johnsonia lot, which require a permit. So it's really to encourage all that residential use on that second floor and above, and have that commercial use on the first floor, and really make it a little bit more robust in development downtown. So the simplest approach was to go with the exemption. That still does, I mean, they still have to comply with parking. I mean, right now, they're only exempt between the six units, between day and mechanic, underneath the parking table. So if they had eight units, they still have to comply with parking in that regard, so through site plan review. So in order to make it more streamlined, it was encouraging to say, you know, we're going to exempt this, we would recommend exempting it, and as well as amending the multifamily section to clarify that residential by use on Main Street and that in the DB district was exempt from that requirement, because it was really meant for just the existing buildings to start populate and redevelop and promote residential units downtown. So that was the portion of it. As Tom had mentioned, there's other approaches of, well, can we... As Tom had mentioned, there's other approaches of, well, can we maybe identify those lots? So one of the, again, by clarifying that the lot would have frontage on Main Street, that's clarity. Then it's, how do you identify those? Can you do it with an overlay district? Just identifying, if you just want to put them on a map, that these are the lots that we're talking about? Or if it was proposed to do another district, I'm not sure whether or not, just to do residential by right on a second floor, whether or not it warrants another district in order to do that, because you still would be regulating almost by footnote, because in the table, you still have a asterisk of something to say what could then occur or not occur, what you mean by that, on the second floor, in that district. And that it was really not to be extended to the other units, parts of the DB District, strictly for those that were fronting on Main Street, that this would apply to, for that. On the section, on the multifamily development, where you talked about like six, or three, six, seven, nine sections there, that's the section where it's nine presently, also applies to other districts. So the board only has underneath that provision six in that area, underneath that section, to waive it for the DB District. They don't have permission to do that for, in other districts, only if it's above nine. So that's for really larger developments. Below that, they would have to go to the Board of Appeals for a variance. So that's where that number comes in, of which board do you go to with that number? So in that regard, the simple approach was exempt it, existing buildings downtown, clarify that it's for those that have frontage downtown, and again, that would eliminate the density provision, make it straightforward. Again, they would still have to comply with parking requirements as described in the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Karen? Counselor Squawley?
So, if we did go with the new zoning district, and the nine-unit issue with back with the six, number six, would we also need to amend that to, say, DB and in-town business district?
Correct. And those are changes that I've, in every case, it would say both of them. If anything applied specifically to the DB District, it would be DB and in-town. I think the only changes would be anything pertaining to developments between four to six units, ultimately. And both with regard to the use table and the parking table.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none?
Seeing none, all right.
Thank you very much.
I am almost as short as Paula, but not quite. Good evening, Christine Tree, Chair of the Pittsburgh Zoning Board. I have submitted comments from the zoning board in written form. In the most part, we are in support of the amendments that were requested. Particularly, we're very supportive of the amendment to the footnote, which excludes the remainder of the downtown business district from the residential uses by right. However, my board, the majority of my board feels that waiver of any density provisions, waiver of the special permit requirements for multifamilies, we're not in support of that exemption for more than three units. The reason being that there are ongoing concerns about the density in downtown, the uses in downtown, parking and traffic in downtown, that we feel would best be addressed through examination by a board. I do understand that there is an impulse, and I think it's commendable impulse, to support business, support development downtown, and to make things as easy as possible for everybody who comes here. But we do need to still take into consideration the existing residents, and the impact that it's going to have on people who are business owners here on Main Street, people who are residents on Main Street now, and visitors to our city. If the City Council is inclined to go forward in exempting all residential uses on Main Street, I would further encourage you to look at all of the uses that are labeled residential in the table of uses, because there, it's not just single-family through multifamily. It's also lodging or boarding house, bed and breakfast, assisted living, the flex-develop, artist, and planned unit development. So there are a number of different types of uses that are different than just having condo units go in on Main Street and worrying where the residents are going to park. We are happy to see prioritization of commercial uses on the ground floor of Main Street buildings, and the limitation to existing buildings with frontage on Main Street. Other than that, I just wanted to say that both Tom Skarowski tonight, and Ms. Karen at the last planning board meeting, put a lot of work into clarifying all of the different amendments, and I think it's been very helpful to everybody, taking them under consideration. And that's all I have to say, unless somebody has questions.
All right. Well, first, I have a question. Why did I never hear that you became the Chair of the zoning board? I see you almost every day.
Well, Mr. President, you have been quite sick for a while, and we have a lot of business to conduct in office, other than the zoning. But our Chair Lauren McNamara, who served for 19 years, a very long time of service to the city, had her last meeting in April, and resigned, and I was elected at that point in time.
Well, congratulations, and I'm sorry I didn't hear about that sooner. I look forward to working with you. Next, I have Counselor Van Helsinga.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question for a clarification on one of the concerns you raised. Tom, the creation of the in-town district, the only difference in allowable uses, I believe, is just for multifamily of six units or fewer, not all residential uses, right?
Correct. So the way it would look in the use table is residential or multifamily development, four to six units would be a Y in the in-town district. It would be a PB for, or I guess it would still remain a Y, which is what it is for downtown business, but all the other uses would still conform to what the existing downtown business district use is. So it would really, that sweet spot between four to six units is what we'd be looking at here.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Squawley?
Yes, just piggybacking right off Counselor Van Helsinga's question, Chair Tree suggested that residential might include lodging, would that, which, if there were a hotel that wanted to open downtown with 10 units, 10 rooms, are those units, are those affected in this zoning change? And which is district or footnote, does that affect it at all differently?
So a hotel is a commercial use, it's not listed under the residential use. There is a bed and breakfast use that is listed under the residential uses. So a hotel would not have been affected by this particular change.
And so I just pulled up here the use table as it stands today, and this is the downtown business district and all the residential uses that correspond with it. So it says planning board, planning board, planning board for one, two, and three family, but then again, you have that residential uses by right footnote, so it's actually a Y, which is confusing, right? It's kind of why we're here. And then multifamily development is PB, lodging or boarding house is N, bed and breakfast BA, assisted living, planning board, planning board, planning board, planning board. So the new district would basically say IID, in-town district, and it would have a Y for single-family, two-family, three-family, then there would be multifamily, four to six units, that would be a Y, and then multifamily, seven or more units, that would be a PB, and then the rest of it would mirror the downtown business district exactly as it is today.
I believe Ms. Karen has something to add on that subject?
Yes, thank you. Though allowing any of the Y in the table, and this is my understanding of it, you're now not looking at just second floor, you're looking at the entire parcel, so it's all by right, first floor included. Otherwise, you now have to do another type of footnote to say, this is, we really mean this only on the second floor, and above for these type of numbers of units. So just bringing that up, as well as that, because if you put a Y in the table for the in-town, then it's like the whole lot is affected.
And may I speak on that for a moment?
Go ahead.
So March 7th, we had a convening of statewide developers who do housing development. It was chaired by Jay Ash, the President and CEO of the Mass Competitive Partnership, formerly one of Governor Baker's cabinet members for economic development and housing. And we brought them together for a roundtable, took them on a tour of Main Street, and talked with them about what do we need to do to develop housing on Main Street? And one of the first things that was mentioned is, don't reflexively require commercial development on first floors. It works sometimes, but not all the time, and it's an inflexible requirement. And even, I kid you not, yesterday received a request from somebody on Main Street to, and it'll go in front of the planning board for site plan review at some point, develop housing on the first floor of Main Street. It's not on the storefront side, it's on the backside, directly adjacent to parking is actually a reasonable solution for what they're trying to do. They've got too large of a commercial area that is not marketable in this climate, and they want to split that commercial area, and also bring in a new revenue-producing set of units that I think is exactly what we're trying to do, create more vitality, more activity on Main Street. So we're at about 40% vacancy on our storefronts, which go, you know, roughly is about 37 to 40 storefronts. We've got over 50% on our upper stories, so I think we need to take every tool in our toolbox to make sure that we are increasing occupancy, both first floor and above.
So either of these two options, the footnote or the new zoning district, that doesn't affect any other residential uses except the multifamily, correct?
Well, the way it stands today, you could already produce one, two, or three-unit properties within our zoning. So this would just expand it further, in the case of the zone, to four, five, and six units, in the case of the footnote, to any existing buildings, which would probably still be six units, because that's the parking requirement, as Chair Karen had suggested. But if a property can show parking, and is an existing building, it could be well beyond six units. And we do have a large supply of parking between our Putnam Garage, our Mill Street Garage, and the Intermodal Station Garage, so conceivably, one could meet the parking requirements, and have by right uses on an existing structure, and be more than six units within the footnote model.
Okay. Second question. On the footnote there, one that allows it by right above the first floor of the structure, is that note included in either of the options presented to us? Is that note, you know, is the requirement that the residential be above the first floor on Main Street, is that included?
It's included in the footnote. So the footnote, and it clarifies further, it's for existing structures, and provided they are located on a lot which has frontage on Main Street. And, oh, and actually, if I didn't include the upper stories here, that's an oversight on my part. The footnote includes upper story specifically. Why don't I just write it in, right?
It's right where your cursor is.
Above the first, oh, I didn't make it blue, because that was already the existing condition. It's getting a little late, folks, sorry.
So with what you just suggested, that maybe the rear of a property that fronts Main Street that isn't marketable for commercial uses, but might be perfectly suited for residential, would that be allowed in our new proposal in either option? Would that be allowed by special permit of the planning board?
In the district model, it would be allowed by right. In the other model, it would be allowed, I believe, but by special permit.
So with the zoning district model, it would be allowed by right, residential first-floor uses?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the market, in many cases, would not go for that, right? You can think of many uses along Main Street, commercial storefronts on the first floor, that just don't make sense, and I think the market will solve for that. But I do think there are cases where it is appropriate, and zoning can be a blunt instrument, so the more flexibility we can build within it, the better we can allow the market to make those decisions.
My board would say in response to that, that because zoning is a blunt instrument, the introduction of residential uses on the first floor of Main Street is something that should be examined by a board.
All set?
All set, thank you.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes, earlier, you made the broad statement that your board wasn't supporting more residential uses downtown because of traffic and parking concerns, is that what you said?
Concerns about parking, traffic, and increased density.
Is it, is this anecdotal, or is this something you've done a study? Because, you know, one thing I was going to mention, you know, Tom's come before us with information on parking, and how much we don't use the parking downtown, and so I'm still, you know, trying to process that, in that, don't we want more flexibility, not less, downtown, if we want to have developers come in and develop for residential use?
My response would be that just because board review is required, doesn't mean that there's not flexibility. My board members, I am lucky enough to have board members which have a long, long history on our board and in our city, and I would value very much their experience and opinions in dealing with properties on Main Street, around Main Street, which have a lack of parking. They also, you know, regularly hear, and this was brought up during the March 15th meeting, where we reviewed these amendments from business owners on Main Street, who are concerned about parking, and those concerns vary. Sometimes we have owners that are concerned, because parking is being taken up by residential uses on Main Street, and they want parking available for their customers. Other times, you know, we have concerns that there, there is a parking scheme that does not recognize what we are trying to do as a city, which is to encourage people to come downtown. This is something that is not from my board, this is from me, I'm a business owner on Main Street, and I find that the parking enforcement scheme makes no sense. We're taxing people to come downtown, and we're taxing them heavily.
Well, we're trying to change that.
Yeah. I hope you do, but, you know, for the past 25 years, I've spent 20 of it being a business owner on Main Street, and the consistency of my clients coming in and being worried that they are going to get a ticket because they came to see my business, I can't express to you how much of a worry it is. Right now, our parking scheme is come here for up to two hours, as long as you have some quarters, and then get out, or we're going to ticket you. And that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But the overall comment, you know, both from myself and the board, is that these parking issues are not resolved simply by counting the number of parking spaces, thereby looking at where the parking is needed, how it's convenient, and how it's made available to residents, and businesses, and casual users that come downtown.
I think we're trying to solve those issues, but at the same time, to discourage residential use, because we've had these parking issues for the last 25 years, is something we're trying to address, and we probably should maintain some flexibility about, you know, the zoning requirements. That's my opinion. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Green?
My only concern, not concern, question, let's just take for example, the Santander Building. Big, large building on Main Street. When there's a developer that wants to develop that property- When there's a developer that wants to develop that property in whatever use happens to come along, which of these, either district or footnote, is going to make sense for that developer? What's going to be our best option, knowing that, one, that could be a huge density issue, and, two, no available parking as it is right now? So what, where do we go, or how do we help along the way?
So, importantly, I would recognize that there actually are two parcels on Boulder Drive that the property does own, the property owner owns, in addition to the building, that offers a fair degree of parking that could serve at least some, if not all, the needs of the building. But the other component of our zoning ordinance also allows for parking within 800 feet of the property. In this case, I think the Mill Street Parking Garage would probably qualifies within 800 feet. And so ultimately, if the developer has a proposal that shows they have parking within 800 feet to accommodate the number of units they're looking for, I think the zone would actually probably not work, because it would be more than six units, and they would need a special permit. I think the footnote may work to allow it by right. But that doesn't necessarily mean that all bets are off and no one's looking at this, right? So you still would need to follow all building code requirements, fire code. You would need to conform to the stormwater rules and regulations. You would still need a site plan review from the planning board, which is, you know, again, the assumption is that it's allowed if it's by right, but you still need a site plan review, similar to the Sam Pitts site that's being redeveloped into a 365,000 square foot industrial facility. That's not by special permit, that's by a site plan review, and I have full confidence in the planning board's ability to look at that site plan and make reasonable recommendations and requests of that applicant. So I think whether it's by right or special permit, I think we have a fair degree of control, all the control we really need to make sure that the right development happens there.
All right. Oh, I have no doubt about that. Thank you.
Further questions? Counsel Grossman, go ahead.
I got one question for Christine Tree and Tom, Thomas. My question is, I agree with her on that parking situation, and I do know a business owner that was on Main Street, and what hurt him was residential parking. They had tickets, and they were parking in front of his business, and it hurt him immensely. Immensely hurt his business. My question to Tom, if we evoked this in, and we start giving permits for parking in the garages, and then we're trying to bring back businesses on Main Street, if we're allowing all these people to park in the parking garages with special permits, is there going to be a requirement where they have to move their cars at a certain time, so the business can get customers to come in and park in the garage to do their business? Or is it going to be, I live in Ford 85 Princess Street, I bought my $30 ticket for the year, and I can park there all day, 365 days a year, and not even move my car? How's this going to work?
So if we're dealing with, I mean, it's somewhat a separate matter, but if we're dealing with off-street parking in one of our parking facilities, first of all, it's a monthly, not a yearly fee, and it can go anywhere from $15 to, I believe, $40, depending on where you're parking. But you would pay a monthly fee, and you'd be allowed to park there overnight. That's sort of the rules of the road, but I feel confident in our ability to allow that, because in the Mill Street Garage and the Boulder Drive entrance, we're at 20% capacity. In the Putnam Street Garage, our capacity varies, but it's roughly 30%, which means we've got 70% capacity to support additional development. We have hundreds of parking spots that'll be available, and we also have a plan, might I add, to monitor the capacity and make adjustments and improvements as needed, both off-street and on-street. That's part of what I presented in front of the council. So I think we have ample supply, and we also have a framework to make sure that when we don't, we have a plan to adjust accordingly.
Now, my second question is to Christine Tree. You mentioned something, but I couldn't hear you. Could you go back on that single-floor issue, like residential? You were talking about it, then it got broken up on my screen. I couldn't hear the rest.
If you're talking about my listing of the uses that are considered residential in nature?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if we are referring and defining to these uses by the footnote, which says residential uses are allowed by right, the table of uses lists not just single through multifamilies as residential uses, but also bed and breakfast, assisted living, lodging houses, planned unit developments, artist's live work spaces, things that have other consequences for the use, rather than just another apartment, another condo unit.
So, in other words, I guess the amended footnote model would, if I'm hearing you correctly, would potentially allow for the other residential uses to be a yes and be allowed by right, whereas the district model would constrain it to those things that are yes in the use table?
I would agree, or you could change the term within the footnote to say residential uses from single family through multifamily.
Got it. That makes sense.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Cruz, I apologize, my notepaper got a little messy, and I missed your mark. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's quite all right. My question was regarding flexibility, but I think I got the gist of it from the questions that came after, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Further questions? All right, if all have been heard, I now declare the hearing closed, and the matter is before the council for deliberation.
Move to approve amendments number two through number nine as amended, or unless not amended as proposed.
Counselor, could I ask for two through six and number eight?
Okay.
Two through six, rather, and then eight and nine, one and seven are the ones that are controversial.
Okay, yes. Yeah. As he said.
Second. I have a second motion and second to approve amendments two through six, amendment eight, and amendment nine, as unanimously approved by the boards and committees. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, though that is unanimous. We now have amendments one and seven, which I would recommend that we deliberate upon as a unit, because they are inextricable from one another. Would anyone like to lead off with some comments or deliberation? Counsel Squall, you go ahead.
I'll start. I like aspects of both these proposals, but, you know, there are, I am leaning towards more flexibility than less flexibility for the developer, and I feel like that's accomplished through the district model better. And I'll stop there.
All right. Since I'm not seeing any other hands shooting up, oh, Counsel Van Hazinger.
I would agree with Counsel Squall that I think in looking at this and considering the different options, I'm in favor of creating the in-town business district as well, because I think what our downtown needs is people. It needs density of development. It needs people coming and going, people who live there, people who come down there to shop. We need traffic on the sidewalks. We need people parking and going into businesses. We need people living there and walking. All of these things is what our downtown lacks. It was developed as a commercial center. People came here to shop, people came here to work in offices. In the upper stories, that model is not viable for a downtown of this size anymore. And really, if you look at trends of development in communities across Massachusetts and the country, downtowns are becoming residential centers again. They're becoming places where people live in higher density than underlying areas of a city or a town, where they have access to public transportation, where they have access to stores, restaurants, bars, local services, places to have fun, places to spend money, and places to live. And this is what we should really be encouraging in the city. And I think we need our zoning ordinance to be as user-friendly as possible. We need to be as inviting as possible to people who are coming into the city to bring their dollars with them and to bring their expertise and to invest in our downtown, to put apartments up above buildings, to renovate storefronts, to get new restaurants, new businesses, and they need clear direction about what they are allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do. I do agree that larger development should get a second look. I think, I like the bifurcation between developments of six units below and developments above. Developments do reach a scale where, you know what, we should go through a lengthier process. We should have more review about what's being proposed, because the effect of these developments is much greater on the surrounding neighborhood. But we have a lot of smaller buildings in our downtown that only support a handful of units, and it just doesn't make sense to be burdensome on developers to go through the special permit process to just put a handful of apartments upstairs. We should make this as straightforward and easy as possible. I think creating the in-town district is the clearest and most user-friendly route to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Green.
I love the fact that we are recognizing that we need a standard, a set standard, that's easy to follow, that everybody understands, so I commend the effort from every board and commission that's worked on this for the past 20 or 24 months to get us to where we are here. I like the fact of having the district solution, and as we move through that process, like we've done many times before, will there be a point where maybe the new district solution could have footnotes as they arise, or as we get Main Street filled up with businesses and residential?
And/or we could adjust the use table, we could adjust the parking regulations to better suit our needs at present. So I think that's what I, that's the benefit of this approach, is we can, it's not just a footnote, it's a district that we can tweak and adapt as we need, depending on, you know, I think this is a good longer-term aim for where we want to go, but if we need to make changes, we know where the changes are taking place.
Thank you. Again, I commend the effort of everybody involved.
Counsel Schultz.
Yes, I agree with Counsel Squall, Counsel Green, and Counsel Van Hazinger, that what we've been doing hasn't particularly worked, in that we should try to encourage residential housing downtown and see where it takes us. I think the in-town district, I'm in favor of that. We talked about that last night at the Economic Development Committee meeting, and I think it'll be the way to go in the future, and by right is the way to go, rather than always, for the, at least for the smaller projects, to do that by right and not go through a cumbersome process. So I'm definitely in favor of the in-town district. Thank you, Counsel Zerla.
Counsel Fleming.
But with, piggybacking on Counsel Schultz, with that being said, for the larger projects that Chairwoman Tree was speaking of, the other types of places that could come in, like nursing homes, or, you know, hotels, or whatever, would that be the footnote to that?
It would be, it would mirror the use table as it is today, if the district model were adopted. You would see what you see from here on below, from lodging house to bed and breakfast. It would still be a no for lodging houses, bed and breakfast, Board of Appeals, assisted living, planning board, special permit, flexible development, PUD, and artist's live work. They would all be special permit from the planning board if we went the in-town district model. If we went the footnote model, then we would, I would advise revising the footnote further per Attorney Tree's suggestion to indicate that if we're exempting Main Street residential uses, it's from one unit to six ultimately, and not anything beyond that, or I should say multifamily development, because one, twos, and threes would already be permitted.
Great. Counsel Craig.
I appreciate all the work everyone has done, and I certainly agree with Attorney Tree about the difficulties of having, you know, clients come visit your business and then be penalized because of the parking situation. So, that's what I hear from residents a lot, but what I want to put out there is that in lieu of the fact that we no longer have consistent local media coverage of very complicated issues, we need to get this information out to prospective developers and people who are already developing with us, for them to fully understand, because if they're still watching at this point, I will give them a medal. And this is important, vital, you know, information, and the clear, you know, the clear understanding that viewers and potential developers should have needs to be, you know, pretty complete and pretty compact. So I don't know in whose realm that would, you know, go into, to, I don't know if that adds up to like, you know, a web brochure, hey, we've made it easier, even easier to develop in 01420, or what, but anyway.
Yeah, I don't see the Sentinel and Enterprise covering this hearing tonight, so we do have to kind of put it in our own hands to agree, and we actually had a half-day staff retreat today, and one of the things we talked about is the zoning districts that we offer more flexibility in, downtown business, neighborhood business, the RC District, among others. We want to create, at least for those three districts, and maybe the in-town district, if we went in that direction, a one-page or sort of guide for the flexible things you can do within each of those districts, in which we'd put it on social media, but also on our website, and hand out to prospective developers, and of course, members of boards and commissions too, so they can get a good sense of our goals within those districts. It's a great suggestion.
Oh, well, thank you, and it sounds like you're, per usual, several steps ahead of us, so thank you.
Well, just hold us to actually getting it done, so.
All right.
One final question.
Go ahead, Counselor.
My question to Tom is, if we do this thing right, Tom, I told you before, we can have a thriving downtown, so there's going to be a lot of pressure on you, because I'm going to be watching you very carefully. So that's all I want to say, good luck to you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that constitutes a question, but that's all right.
I would move to adopt the solution as recommended by the Economic Development Committee.
Counselor, if you would be willing to hold that for just a moment?
Sure.
Thank you. So, surprising no one, I've been accumulating some notes on this as we've been going. I'll try to keep it very brief. I am broadly in favor of the new district proposal, but I do think there are a few nuances that we might want to crib from the footnote. One is that it does seem to me advisable to restrict by-right development to upper floors. I understand the idea that there may very well be several locations where sort of back-of-lot residential uses behind a storefront or something would be appropriate, and I would fully support those, but I think they will be niche enough that it wouldn't hurt to still have them go through a special permit process, since they will not be the norm. Whereas what I would not want to see on Main Street, as we're trying to revitalize a walkable Main Street and so forth, is the conversion of existing buildings into blank fronts with, you know, residential all the way through. Nor do I think it would be feasible or at all easy to draft language that would specify that you could have residential only in the back but not in the front, and how much of the front do you need to use for commercial and so forth. I'd rather leave that to the discretion of the planning or zoning boards in those individual instances where a developer says, look, I just can't fill the whole ground floor with commercial development, I'd like to put apartments in the back. That seems perfectly appropriate, but I think the planning board or the zoning board can look at that and see that. The other thing is, I do think if we include anything to do with first floor, then we do have to include also some form of language analogous to the as viewed from Main Street, not necessarily because we're including only properties that front directly on Main Street, because I know the district, the proposed district extends a little bit off Main Street, but because some of our downtown buildings are built on a grade such that it's not clear which floor is the first floor. You know, you could ask three different people and get three different answers as to what's the first floor and what's the basement. You know, is the 805 Main Street, my father's old building, has a level that is below grade from Main Street but at grade from the rear of the building? Is that a basement level, or is that the first floor and the Main Street level is the second floor? the second floor? I think if we said as viewed from the primary frontage or something like that, that might solve the problem. Let's see. We would probably also need to include an additional purpose clause in our, in the header of our zoning ordinance if we're creating a new, new district. I don't have any language off the top of my head for that, but we would want to include it so that there is some direction to the boards as to, excuse me, what kind of development we're looking to promote. I think we all have a good idea of it, and I think our current boards have a good idea of it, but our current boards will not be our perpetual boards, I assume. We haven't yet found a way to immortalize them, so. And the last thing is, I'm not sure about the name. I think in-town versus downtown has the potential to create some degree of confusion, so we may want, but I know we can't use Main Street because MS is already the medical services district. So just a thought to, when we turn this into ordinance form, that we may not want to go with specifically in-town district. But otherwise.
And for context there, we're, we're in the process of doing a rebranding in this exact area, calling it the in-town district, which is.
Oh, right, you did mention that. I apologize.
Like, just bringing back a term from the 90s, which folks used to use to describe roughly that district.
Yeah, no, I apologize. I withdraw my concern. I think that's all the comments that I had on the matter, and I know we will see this in ordinance form to nitpick and dissect before it becomes law. So I'm comfortable moving forward at this point. I see Counselor Fleming has a comment.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. The district model will allow apartments on the first floor?
It, it would allow for that, yes, unless we created a footnote as suggested by Counselor Zarella.
And just to clarify, my suggestion would not actually be that we create a footnote. I'm in favor of removing footnotes because they're hard to parse, but rather that we create a new line for the table, that we split out the current line into, I, I don't have language in my head, but that we split it out into two lines so that there would be one specifically for this new purpose.
I, I have a little problem with that. I guess it just goes back to childhood. I remember going into the North End as a child every Saturday, and at that time, it was outside dining, you know, without permits. And I just remember, you know, being at a restaurant or an outside, you know, what they, you know, they were small little buildings, and then having someone who lives next door sitting out there, you know, I just, I haven't, that to me doesn't speak welcome, you know? You know, I just, just the more I thought about it, I'm just, I just remembered that, and I just, you know, because that's where they live. So, you know, you, you could be outside dining here and have someone doing their daily activities there, you know? And I, you know, I.
I get it.
The two go hand in hand. I'd like to keep the living above.
Are you all set, Counselor? What was that?
I, I am.
Okay, just to make sure. Counselor Squallia.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I don't, I don't share any of these concerns. I think as if there are particular, you know, as Counselor Zarella suggested, there are multiple properties that have different, you know, frontages on different streets and different levels. There are multiple properties that really don't have a lot of windows on the first floor. You know, there are a lot of differently shaped properties, you know, that long, maybe skinny and long, that, you know, might warrant, that might be perfectly feasible for, for live, living half the space or even, you know, all of the first floor space. And I think it adds to the vibrancy, you know, of, of, you know, this, this multi, you know, use district that we're trying to accomplish in the downtown, you know, kind of letting the developers kind of, you know, and, and the, the market need help drive how we, how we fill these buildings rather than impose our own kind of, you know, rigid structures to the development standards. I really like the, the idea that, you know, we're being, we're allowing flexibility with six units or less. And more than six units, you know, it still has to go through the planning board process and other specific buildings that might not be in this specific district. Thank you.
Counselor Van Hazinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I understand the concerns about residential uses on the first floor, but I think the concern is really not that it's on the first floor. I think the concern is that you have a commercial storefront that someone throws an apartment into. And so it's not really that the, the problem is on, it's on the first floor, it's that it's on the, the portion of the building fronting Main Street. So I think if there is any amendment to restrict that, it shouldn't be a blanket restriction for first-floor residential use, it should more be the restriction against the inclusion of living space on the portion of a building fronting Main Street. Because that's the area where I'll admit that we don't want to see residential uses. You can see, we can see property management offices, we can see entrances to apartment, you know, the building that residents would use, but as Counselor Fleming mentioned, you, you don't want, because often these storefronts, they throw some curtains in the, the front windows, and then you have someone living behind it, and that's not what you want to see, and it's not really the best situation for the resident either. And you would hope that the market would control for this, that a knowledgeable developer wants to get the most out of their property, wouldn't do that. But in a situation where there has been disinvestment for so many years, and you may get someone come in and get a, a building for cheap and just figure they can throw something in. So I understand that concern. I would just say that if a change is made, I would be specific about the use of the front of the building facing Main Street is prohibited from including living space versus a blanket restriction for all of the first floor.
And just to piggyback on that, that would be my preference as well. I was just thinking it through, and I couldn't think of an easy way to specify it because if you did have someone intent on putting in, you know, residential stuff at the front and we tell them they can't, how do we get detailed enough to specify that they can't just throw in what will turn out to be a small, narrow, vacant storefront and then behind it have a, have all apartment space?
Then if you do that, I mean, that's, that's what the situation would be. I mean, it doesn't benefit them to do that.
Right. It's, so I'm just concerned with how we would draft the specifics of that. I agree with the objective, though. I, it is the, the frontage that is my concern as well, not the, not the first floor, generally speaking.
I should have been more specific, so yeah, that's.
But that said, if everyone has made their comments and concerns known, again, I will remind the council that we will see this in ordinance form so we can continue to tweak it as long as we give Tom and the solicitor adequate guidance as to what sort of thing we would like to see.
Move to adopt the proposal as proposed by the Economic Development Committee.
Second. I have a motion and second to adopt the proposal favored by the Economic Development Committee.
Speaking of the motion. And this is just to clarify, this is to accept the creation of the in-town district, which is largely the same as recommended by Legislative Affairs with the exception of the removal of that adjustment to the density waiver that Tom discussed, just so everyone's clear of what we're voting on.
And on that, I would note that I agree with the findings of the Economic Development Committee that that was actually just a bit of overdrafting by the Legislative Affairs Anyone else on the motion? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
I thought I started after. Counselor Katur.
Yes.
Counselor Cragan.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
And President Zarella.
Yes.
Thank you.
That is unanimous. All right, we now have 09022. Mark Doohan, Executive Director, New View Communities, property owner of 62 Academy Street, to amend the 40-hour smart growth district by adding the following properties: 0 Elm Street, reference petition 19220, granted October 13th, and additionally 49 Snow Street. I now declare the hearing open. Mr. Skarsky.
Good evening, Councilors. So this is pretty simple, I hope, and adds the Low Park and 49 Snow Street to the smart growth overlay district. The Low Park amendment actually was voted on unanimously by the planning board and Legislative Affairs Committee in 2020, but it was then just accepted by the council. It wasn't a public hearing, so we couldn't actually formalize it as a 48 zoning change. And that was done strictly for the purposes of New View's legal team as they were reviewing, doing their due diligence. Technically, a car has to drive through what is Low Park to access the parking. You can't drive through a district into one with a less restrictive zoning use, so they wanted to have a clear entitlement, thus adding this to the zoning district that allows the Pittsburgh housing, Pittsburgh.
Arts community.
Arts community, thank you. 902, guys. And 49 Snow Street was added due to the owner seeking an affordability mix. So this was 150-unit university apartments originally approved by the planning board in 2000. As a 100% market rate project, the owner is now looking at an affordability mix, some affordable units, some workforce units, some market rate units. If we add it as a smart growth project, we would be eligible for a $3,000 per unit density bonus payment from the state, depending on how many units ultimately we'd see in the final development, which might be different than 150. We could see anywhere from $300,000 to $450,000 in a density bonus payment from the state. The reason this wasn't smart growth in the first place is there's a 20% affordability requirement. Now this would be satisfied, hence adding it to the district. And we have the state's approval to add both of these to the district. This is what it would look like. The existing smart growth district is outlined in red. We'd add a little elbow to the district here, that's 49 Snow Street, and then here we would add to what already is permitted here at the Pittsburgh Arts Community. And just to be clear, we couldn't build any housing on this park just because it's zoned as such. And the councilors that were here during the Article 97 process know it's very complicated to do anything on parkland, even what we did accomplish was get in a driveway to drive right through. So it's a very complicated process, but in no way does this set up the park to be developed as housing. So with those caveats, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have. It's been unanimously approved by the planning board and previously Legislative Affairs and the planning board in 2020 as well.
I have one quick question before I go to the councilors I have on my list. Just for the sake of a more contiguous district, is there anything preventing us from also including the region on which the number three sits there in brown, between the little elbow and the, what is that?
That's a CVS.
Oh, gotcha.
So this is the one zoning component of our ordinance that has state oversight, so they have to approve every property. They wouldn't approve something that's a CVS today.
I see. That makes sense. I just wanted to.
I, I would have suggested the same otherwise.
Okay, excellent. Counselor Van Hazing.
Wasn't the BF Brown site and the High School Annex site previously added to the 40-hour district?
It, it's already in there. It, so what you're actually seeing, that like beige background is, is the, the downtown business district.
Ah, okay.
It's what's outlined in red, so it's already included in the district. The new ones are outlined in red and embossed with that highlight.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Counselor Judith Hally.
49 Snow Street, is that the FRA property?
Formerly, now owned by Bill Krikorian. They, she sold it, the FRA sold it last year.
What's going on there?
Housing. So it was permitted for 150 units originally as market rate, and now it will likely be an affordable mix just given market forces.
And what does this do for that? Does this do anything to speed that along or is just, just, is there any benefit for that, does that project benefit at all from this being a new?
Technically, it shifts from a special permit to a by right development.
Okay.
But again, the planning board has approved a by, or is in the process of approving a by right 360,000 square foot industrial facility, and they still have a lot of controls over how it works. And within the smart growth ordinance, there's a whole set of standards you still need to meet. So it's not do whatever you want, it's follow this criteria, otherwise you need.
I didn't know if doing this would speed it along or it would maybe, it would make it easier for it to come to reality.
Right.
Doesn't sound like it would.
So, well, in all likelihood, the 150-unit development that was originally proposed and approved, if it does have an affordable mix, is going to have to look different because of things that the state requires, like 10% of the units have to be three-bedroom, for example. And the, the state has a lot more oversight. So the Moren Square project's a great example. That same developer proposed a 67-unit, 100% market rate development, and then that didn't fly. They had to get an affordable developer on board. Once they started talking in the state, 67 units became 44, and it became a mix of two and three bedrooms, et cetera. So they'll, in all likelihood, be a whole new application to the planning board, in which case they could go through this process to get a by right development as opposed to a special permit.
So Krikorian, he's the one who did the Moren Square?
Correct. Well, he, he was one of the development partners.
Okay.
They, his role is really to permit a project and then seek developers to help him take it to the finish line.
Thank you. Further questions, comments?
Mr. Pres, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
When he talks about, when you're talking about affordable housing, Tom, what are you talking, I, I read the thing, it's 20%, that'd be 30 units out of 150. When you say affordable housing, what's the average for the affordable housing and what's the average income coming into that building?
So it, it's hard to say without knowing the exact mix they'd be looking at. The affordability limits are, are set annually by HUD and focused on the regional median income. So 100% me, area median income is what, let's just say, the average person makes within the north central region that's covered by this HUD designation. Anything affordable would be 80% of that or below. And, and if you're talking about workforce housing, it could be anywhere from 80% to 120% of the area median income. If you're talking strictly affordable, it's below 80% or 80% or below. And, and it's probably going to be a mix of both of those things as well as some market rate units, but ultimately that will determine, that will be determined by the developer that gets brought onboard, who is distinct from the person who permitted this in the first place.
So let me ask you a question. So the government can come in and say, you know, we no longer want you to have 20%. We, we would like to see it up to 40%. Could they not?
Oh, they could. Yes.
And my second question, I know we talked earlier, and you talked about approximately 400,000 plus, or less than 300,000 plus. If I say, if I accept this, can I make an amendment to this on the smart growth thing saying that the money that we collect from this project on smart growth goes directly back into the neighborhood, not into the general fund?
Counselor, that would not be within the scope of an amendment. That would be a, if allowable at all, that would be a rather substantial ordinance change.
Would have to be an ordinance change. Why was that? Why would that happen? If you're taking the cash that you're getting from a smart growth and you're reinvesting it into a wide, wide area that needs it?
Counselor, because you'd need to create an entirely separate fund. I don't even know off the top of my head what the legalities behind that would be, but it would, but just the fact that I would have to research it probably tells you that it would require some extensive legislation. Mr. Skarsky?
I think the council has adopted, as a matter of practice, using the smart growth funding to support things within the district. So the money we got from the Pittsburgh Arts Community is going in to making the parking improvements to address a lot of the things that Attorney Tree had alluded to earlier. So I think that's certainly my office's intent when the money comes in. Of course, it's the council's will to determine how it's spent, but I would certainly encourage spending on things that encourage smart growth within the area in question.
Counselor Van Helsing.
Tom brought up the example of the Pittsburgh Arts Committee, which was permitted under the 40, or the Smart Growth process. And the council did adopt a resolution to use funds that we received through that density bonus payment to improve Low Park, which is next door to the Pittsburgh Arts Committee. So, there is a precedent to do that. Like President Zerella said, it is more complicated to require that, but when there's an expectation of what we know what those funds will likely be, there is the opportunity for the council to pass a resolution, or a petition, or a direction to guide that money towards specific projects in that area.
A very good point. A very good point, Counselor. And that would be what I would recommend, Counselor Boeschman. If you wanted to proceed down that avenue, you would introduce it to the council as a non-binding resolution, stating to the mayor, essentially, that this is what the council wishes the funds to go towards. But actually requiring that it go there, that's if-ier.
I, you know, to get back to what Councilor Hesenberg said, Andy said, on the BF Brown, I remember that one there. I thought the, that the money that was going to fix up Low Playground was coming from Mark Dolan's group, not Smart Growth.
So, it's two things, really. We got funding to get the district approved in the first place. That's what we used to do the parking stuff. And then we get a density bonus payment once an occupancy certificate has been awarded. And the resolution stated that a portion of that money, or money from elsewhere, from the general fund, from other grant resources, would go towards supporting Low Park. So, it may come from the Smart Growth money, it may come from elsewhere. It's sort of a non-binding in that respect, but it's a non-binding commitment to spend money on Low Park, with an understanding that New View helped bring all this funding to the table with this permit process.
Exactly. All set, Counselor?
It's going to have to be. Yes.
We can talk later if you need to. Counselor Green.
Can you just, Tom, can you just clarify that when you refer to affordable housing, is that low-income housing?
It can be. I think it depends on the strata that we're, the income strata that we're referring to ultimately. So, 80% or below would be considered affordable by the state. 80% to 120% is workforce housing. But within that 80% and below, there's a wide range, right? There's extremely low income, which is 30% and below, which is a lot of what you might see in, you know, like Housing Authority properties, things of that nature. Certain properties have housing vouchers associated with them, where they might be restricted at a certain limit, and then the vouchers come in and help fill the gap between what they can pay and what the rent actually is. These properties often have a wide range of income types. It's like what you see at the Arn Works, or 470 Main Street, or the Riverfront, Riverside Commons, where you have a mix of housing types. And really, as a practical matter, 80% area median income is kind of the market rent within this district, as it stands today.
What will be the requirement for parking at 49 Snow Street if that, with that parcel being developed into all housing?
So, it would need to meet the parking requirements of the Smart Growth District, which states anything greater than two bedrooms, you would need two parking spots. Two bedrooms would require one and a half, one bedroom would require one parking space, which is actually the same now as our multifamily development ordinance. So, it would be treating, following the same rules as the rest of our housing developments. And again, the parking could be onsite or within 800 feet of a public or off-street facility. So, in the case of Snow Street, within 800 feet from the intermodal station garage, of which there's ample supply. But I know the original proposal also included quite a bit of parking onsite.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor President.
I just, I just, I just want a little bit more clarification on the affordability. So, I believe when this was presented, when you say voucher, what is a voucher?
So, that's a voucher, you know, that, there's sort of two types of affordable housing, some that is place-based, where...
So, it's assistance through the state?
Pardon?
It's help through the state.
Correct, correct. A voucher, yeah.
So, I believe when these apartments were proposed initially, that was not on the table, because I believe those questions were specifically asked, that you had to be working to be able to afford these apartments. That's, that's the understanding that I think the council has got.
So, Counselor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the only question before us right now, really, is whether to extend the Smart Growth District. We're not actually voting on what goes into any of these specific properties.
And it still will get brought in front of the Planning Board when it does get permitted. It's just, it's premature for me to say exactly what the limits are, but even with the vouchers, the vouchers are by themselves not place-based, so you could actually use your voucher to seek housing anywhere, conceivably, as long as the landlord accepts it.
All set, Counselor?
I am.
Counselor Boeschman.
Final question here. My question is, we're going to make that area Smart Growth. We're doing a lot of work on Boulder Drive and Main Street. Are you going to make that more friendly to cross the street for parking if they elect to park their cars there?
Counselor, Counselor, again, I apologize, but that's not what we're voting on tonight. We can discuss walkability and so forth at a later date.
All right.
Thank you. Counselor Van Helsing.
Thank you. I just, I do want to step back to the subject of affordability, because I think it is an important part of the Smart Growth District, because it is a requirement of housing developed under the Smart Growth District, include at least 20% of affordable housing. So, I think it's, it is important that we have a firm understanding about what this entails and what it consists of.
Sure, I would agree that, to the extent that we're talking generally about the principle of affordable housing and not what's going to go into any specific unit, that is germane to it.
Correct. And I think it's important to understand that there's really two different types of affordable housing. There's income-restricted housing, and then there's subsidized housing, with a housing-assistance payment contract attached to it. Income-restricted housing is basically, it's part of a bargain. You have instances where properties are approved under 40B, or use low-income housing tax credits, which the name is a little misleading, but the, in 40B, a developer is allowed to ignore local zoning in order to do something, but in exchange, they have to accept some income-restricted housing. Or a project that uses low-income housing tax credits, like the Harper Furniture Building did in the, in the end, has to accept a certain number of income-restricted units. In these units, the resident is responsible for the rent. The only change is that the rent must be set so it's affordable to someone making up to a certain amount. So, the developer, it doesn't benefit them to have lower-income residents, because they don't get any extra money for those apartments. They have to set the rent at a certain level so it's affordable to someone earning a certain amount, but then they want to get as much as they want, just like, as they can, just like any other property owner. Subsidized housing is different in that there's a, an assistance payment made on behalf of the resident to make up the difference in rent to what is affordable to someone at a lower income level to what the, the market rate rent would be. And those are less common. Mostly, they consist of elderly housing or large public housing projects. Sometimes those, these types of developments may include a small number, they're commonly called Section 8, because that's the name of the contract and the program through HUD, may include a small number of those units, but the majority of the income-restricted units will be rented at the rent that's maximally allowed, because the developer wants to get as much as they can for their property to pay for the operations of the property. So, there is a big difference. So, they do, this, name affordable housing or low-income housing can be scary to some people, but all it's really doing is saying that a certain number of apartments must be affordable to someone making this amount of money. And at 80% of the area median income, that's a significant portion of the city's population. So, I don't think affordable housing is really something to be scared of when you hear that is part of the development, that it, it really is people who have, have to work, have to earn money, have to be able to pay their rent. It's just that the rent is limited to be affordable to a larger segment of the population, that's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Judith Hawley.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm glad that Councilor Van Helsing made that distinction, because we hear far often about Smart Growth and then 40B and affordable housing, low-income housing. Well, what's low income? It's, it's a number. As someone who lived on 470 for three years, you know, my first job coming out of college was making $32,000. I mean, I had a job, I had benefits, but it was considered low-income slash affordable. So, when I hear those terms, that's what I'm thinking of. We're thinking, we're talking about, could be college students getting right out of college, having an entry-level job, people who have jobs. I think the concern about the low-income aspect in the mindset of people when we talk about these zoning areas is disposable income. I don't see it as like, you know, there's a stigma about, you know, that there may be, it would not be pleasing to the downtown, but I think that the concern that some people may have about it is the ability to have disposable income. So, when you hear low-income or affordable housing, people immediately think of something else and not the focus really on, well, if you're just getting by, can you spend money in the district downtown? Because we want people to live down here, we want to incentivize residential development, but we also want the business development to follow from it, for these people to get out of their buildings and to spend money in the downtown. The concern is if there's a lot of low-income development, it will lead to less disposable income. Not that the people can't afford where they live, but do they have a lot of money to burn on amenities that the downtown will afford? But I, I'm not concerned about that. I, you know, I always think of low-income and affordable as, you know, college students coming right out of college. So, there's a stigma that we should really push back against, and I think my colleague made a good distinction between the two. Most of these areas, if not all of them, are that affordable low-income, because you think of 35, 40 grand a year as a low-income level. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but that's typically what an entry-level job is, you know, for a lot of people coming out of school. So, that's how I look at it. It's people who have jobs that work hard, and, and the question just becomes about disposable income. Is there, are we attracting enough people to the downtown that have money to spend, as opposed to whether they can afford to live there or not? So...
And you've all heard me talk a lot about having a good income mix and not having a skew towards one side or the other. I think one good argument for disposable income in income-restricted properties is we have a lot of people in the city who are paying more than 30% of their income on rent. Controlling that at 30% of your income allows you to have more disposable income if you are a young professional who is employed and, or a young family, for that matter, who's gainfully employed, but you're having a hard time making ends meet, spending at the grocery, buying a cup of coffee. This does give you some additional flexibility and disposable income to do that. I think it's just about finding that, the right mix, and we're always seeking to have a good, healthy mix of, of various income strategies when we're developing housing.
Plus, any opportunity like this one to extend this district is a benefit to us because of the state incentives as well. So, any way we can take advantage of those state incentives, to me, it's a no-brainer. That would only accelerate these development opportunities and not hinder them. So, any other opportunities we have to do that, that makes sense, I would be all in favor of, so I won't even hesitate to support this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve 9022.
Actually, I apologize. I forgot again that we're in a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Seeing none, any in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I now declare the hearing closed, and the matter is before the council.
Move to approve 9022.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve petition 9022. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Boeschman.
Yes.
Counselor Katur.
Yes.
Counselor Kriegen.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tali.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
And Counselor Van Helsing.
Yes.
And President Zerola.
Yes.
Thank you, 11 and 5.
Good night, Tom. Thank you.
And our chairs as well. All right, next up, we have 06422. Move 6422 be given leave to withdraw.
Second.
Counselor, if you could give me just a moment, I just wanted to introduce to the council and the public what we're doing with this. This is a loan order that the mayor, that we had previously approved, but the mayor had sent us a communication requesting that we would give it leave to withdraw, as the final number that will be required has changed. The new loan order petition will be getting sent to finance. That said, I do have a motion and second to give 6422 leave to withdraw. If there is no objection, I'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is withdrawn. I would ask unanimous consent to waive the reading of the finance orders, as there are many. Seeing no objection, they are referred to finance. We have two, we have a pair of ordinances. Counselor Judith Hawley.
Just, Mr. President, these two ordinances, I don't know, if, you weren't at the last finance meeting, but just in case you didn't know, or if you do, I'm sorry. These should be referred to finance. They are tied to the money orders that are currently being held in committee for the non-union salaried personnel.
Certainly, yes. Finance is where they were getting sent.
Okay, it says first reading, so I wanted to make sure we weren't having a motion for a first reading.
Right, right. No, no. Thank you, though. Thank you for making sure. So, 135 and 13622, two ordinances, amending Chapter 44 of the Pittsburgh City Code. Those both stand referred to finance. We have petition 13722, unit tilt, petition for a new poll on Pritchard Street. I would ask that we have a motion to refer that to public hearing on May 17th.
Hail, Hail.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is set for public hearing. We have a rules petition from Councilors Deena Tali and Kucher.
Move 13822, 13922, and 14022 be sent to their respective committees.
It is done by operation of rules, so I will treat that as a motion to waive the reading.
The reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
If there is no objection, we will waive the reading by unanimous consent. Seeing none, that concludes the business on our agenda. I have a few announcements. One, City Councilor Bernie Schultz is holding a Ward 1 community meeting. It will be held this coming Monday, May 9th, at 6:30 in this building, the Legislative Building. Mayor Deena Tali and Treasurer Ann Cervantes will make presentations and then answer questions. The Pittsburgh Community Lions Club is having a barbecue pulled pork fundraiser dinner Thursday, May 19th, from 4:00 to 6:30 at the Armory, at the Senior Center. The cost is $7, includes a barbecue pork sandwich, coleslaw, macaroni salad, and ice cream. dine in or to-go. Call the Senior Center at 978-829-1790 to reserve your meal. RSVPs are required.
What was the date? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, May 19th. No, it's fine, my voice is going. And we...
City cleanup? City cleanup this Saturday?
Ah, yes, I keep forgetting to put those on my notes. We do have the, this is the final city cleanup, am I correct?
Correct, I believe it is wards, is it wards five and six? And we meet at...
I believe so, yes.
Four and five.
Four and five.
And we meet at the high school and also at...
It's at the Long's Joe parking lot at Hyatt Academy.
Excellent, thank you.
Eight to noon, all supplies provided, gloves, bags, masks, coffee, donuts, lunch as available, no need to RSVP, just come.
And last but not least, I would like to more formally recognize our Assistant City Clerk, Amanda Alfred, for her excellent work as our provisional city clerk for many months, while we went through the lengthy process of acquiring our excellent new city clerk. So, thank you. So thank you, Amanda. You've been a pleasure to work with, and I look forward to continuing to work with you back in the role of the clerk of the year.
Behind the curtain. Behind the curtain. Oh, my goodness. Gorgeous. Thank you.
So nice.
I love the color. I just actually got a bougouli, that is exactly this color, too.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
How did we know? How did we know? We kept a secret information to...
Yes, I will know that.
Because we emailed everybody, and I mailed them the agenda.
Right.
Move to adjourn?
One moment. We do have one further thing. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reminding me. I just want to remind everyone and notify the public that the city council will be